Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. The first meeting of the Board of Education's Fiscal Management Committee. My name is Lynn Harris. I am the Chair of the Committee this year. And with me are the other, I'm going to ask the other members of the committee to introduce themselves.
Judy Daca, District One. Good morning.
Good morning, Pat O'Neil.
So that gives us a quorum. But I'm also going to ask the other members of the MCPS staff who are joining us today to introduce themselves. The work at the Fiscal Management Committee is maybe not as splashy and flashy as some of the other areas of committee work, but is integral to, you know, efficient operations of the system. So I'm very happy that we have such a good team of folks that understand all of the areas of our financial and fiscal house. So I'm going to start with you, Dan, if you want to introduce yourself and then let the rest of the members of your team also introduce themselves.
Good morning. I'm Dan Morello. I'm the Associate Superintendent for Finance. Very excited to be here today. I guess in the order of presentation, can my Office of Finance friends introduce themselves?
Sure. Susan Lau, Chief Investment Officer.
I'm Rob Riley, Director of Financial Services.
And I'm Tom Clausen. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of Finance.
And we have some of our partners from our audit firm and our actuaries joining us in a few minutes. So I think we're ready to get started whenever you are, Ms. Harris.
Okay. I'm going to also ask the other members of MCPS central staff who are with us today to introduce themselves as well and the key members of the Board Office.
Good morning. Lori Christina Webb. I'm Chief of Staff for the Board.
Good morning. I'm MJ Bergsuster. I'm Supervisor of the Internal Audit Unit.
And good morning. I'm Aroza Labad, Executive Director in the Office of Teaching, Learning, and Schools.
Okay. I think that's everyone. Please let me know if I am missing anybody. So first of all, I'm just going to direct everybody's attention to the agenda to make sure it is accurate and there are no additions or changes before we get started. And seeing no additions, then we are, that agenda is good to go. So now we are going to move forward to the first item on the agenda is an informational summary for the last meeting of the Fiscal Management Committee, which was on September 21st last fall.
They look fine. The informational summary looks fine.
Okay. Any other comments? Items missing? Okay. So given that our informational summary is complete and accurate, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Year-end Pension Report. I think we're going to Dan and Susan for that.
This is a report that we would normally report out in the fall to the committee. Since there was not a meeting in the fall because of the COVID, I've asked Susan to come and do her presentation today. And I believe there's a slide deck that we can call up and go through. So take it away, Susan.
Great. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Ms. Harris, Ms. O'Neil, and Dr. Daca. My name is Susan Lau. I'm here with you this morning to review the assets of the defined benefit plan and to provide you with a summary of the OPEP trust. Both trusts contains assets that provide pension and healthcare benefits for MCPS retirees. Could we go to the next slide, please? So as you know, the pension assets are overseen internally and guided by the Board of Investment Trustees. The objectives of the pension trusts are twofold. One, pay benefits when they are due, and two, achieve the 7% actual rate of returns. With those targets in mind, the Board of Investment Trustees, in conjunction with its external advisors, construct a portfolio that seeks to maximize potential return with reasonable levels of risk. Next slide, please. So let's start a little bit with the, just a bit of a background on the pensions and really review the key components of the pension. What you see here is a scale representing the balance between assets and liabilities. On the left-hand side of the scale are the building blocks of the assets, which includes the annual contributions of MCPS, contributions from employees, and the returns generated by investing those assets. On the right-hand side, you see the primary components that drive our liabilities, which include the negotiated payout rates, number of employees, and the life expectancy of those employees. Assets and liabilities do fluctuate from year to year, but the size of the building blocks on this scale are fairly representative of their importance over the life of the plan. Later on, I'll be giving you some insights into the yellow part of this scale, which is the investment returns. Next slide, please. But before we get into that, let's go over some of the numbers behind those building blocks. So for fiscal 2020, the largest contribution to the assets came from the school's contribution of $84 million, followed by employees contributing $27 million, and lastly, by investments at $19 million. When you take into account the $108 million of benefits paid to MCPS retirees last fiscal year, the pension ended fiscal 2020 with a balance of a little bit over $1.8 billion. And much like last fiscal year, combined contributions of MCPS and its employees slightly exceeded the pension payments of the year. This allows any investment returns to be deployed towards reducing the gap between the present value of our projected liabilities and assets and help improve our funding ratio. Next slide, please. So now let's get a little bit into the investments that generate the returns. As I mentioned earlier, one of the primary objectives of the Board of Investment Trustees is to construct a portfolio with exposure to multiple strategies that in aggregate, it believes will achieve 7% return. Here's an illustration of those investment strategies currently in our portfolio. And we start on the left-hand side. Those strategies are expected to produce higher returns for the portfolio over time. And the ones on the right are those that will generally provide protection in a weaker market environment. Our work includes maintaining the appropriate balance of these investments. And with each investment, we often ask ourselves, how does the change improve the likelihood of achieving our objectives? What role does this decision serve in the above framework? And how does a change impact the portfolio over intermediate and long term? Next slide, please. Now, the Board of Investment Trustees collaborate with its investment consultant to set these long-term allocations for the strategies we just saw in the last slide. This chart here depicts where we are today relative to those long-term targets. Now, you may be asking yourself, why are we not at our targets at this current time? So the reality is, the portfolio is oftentimes in flux. Those movements might include our ability to find the right investments to meet the objectives we laid out or terminate the ones that do not. It can also include market fluctuations that may make those targets harder or easier to obtain. And then there are obviously investments that we make that might be easier to get into or out of, but others that would require a multi-year process to achieve. So all of those movements might impact our ability to hit our target allocations in the near term. However, our day-to-day work involves finding, planning, and coordinating those investments to work towards hitting those targets in a reasonable timeframe. Next slide, please. So let's take a look at the returns from fiscal 2020. We see here that the total fund had lagged our benchmarks and our total return objective of 7% for 2020. Now, the primary contributor to the underperformance to our benchmark is the gap between the portfolio's target and actual weight in private equity. I would also add that the second half of fiscal 2020 captures some of the more volatile swings in the market as a result of the pandemic's impact on financial markets. So I want to, I really want to emphasize, while it's prudent to review short-term performance, it's important to keep in mind that we manage our investments over a long-term horizon. With that being said, over, if you look at our results over the 10-year period, we've actually exceeded our target return objectives. That being said, we continue to work to narrow the gap between our current and target allocations and continue to refine the investment strategies in the portfolio accordingly, which leads me to our parties for the next 12 months. Next slide, please. So as part of the work I had described thus far, we looked to make sure we have the right partners, service providers, and resources to sustain this work. And as the portfolio has grown and the components have become more complex, we are carefully scrutinizing our current investment structure, implementation of those allocations that we just saw, operational processes, and evaluate our service providers and partners to assess whether we have adequate resources moving forward. In addition, we look to continue to review and assess the portfolio's long-term strategic asset allocation in light of market conditions and evolving long-term trends. Next slide, please. Finally, I want to quickly touch upon our liabilities within the CRHBT, or also known as the OPEP. As you know, OPEP liabilities remain with MCPS, but the assets associated with those liabilities are actually managed by the county. And MCPS does have representatives on that board that oversees those assets. As of July 1st, 2020, the OPEP liabilities is approximately 18.5% funded when you calculate it in a manner that is consistent with our CAFR. The total return of the OPEP net fees was 4.72% in fiscal year 2020. Next slide, please. And finally, for your reference, I've just included the 11 agencies in the county that participate in the CRHBT. As you note, MCPS is the second largest behind the county government. And with that review, this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
So I'll look to Dr. Daca and Ms. O'Neil. Any questions about the presentation?
No question, just a general comment. You know, I certainly, it's important that we do look at it over time because, you know, COVID, the impact of COVID did wreak havoc on financial markets. Both, you know, there was high volatility, both positive and negative over the time period. And then, you know, it's just going to have to be a note work, notation that this was a COVID period.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. O'Neil. I think that, you know, the work at the Fiscal Management Committee this year is as important or more important than ever, given what Ms. O'Neil just just said. You know, we're, we're planning, we're doing the work that we need to do, but none of us know exactly where we're going to be fiscally as the year moves forward. So I just want to say, I appreciate so much that we have in our financial management group, people who are true experts at managing this kind of pension fund and looking at both the long and short term and making sure that we keep our fiscal house in order and are able to, you know, honor our obligations to our, our teachers, our employees, and our retirees. So, thank you very much. And that takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is the Year-end Financial Report, the External Auditor. And I think that goes to Dan and Mr. Riley.
So yeah, Rob, Rob Riley is the point of contact for our audit work, and he's going to discuss the year-end report, the audit, and discuss at some point this, this morning, the statewide MSD audit that's going on right now also. So Rob, please.
Good. So good morning, everyone. So like Dan said, I'm going to give you a broad overview of our year-end financials, the process that we use to create them, and some enhancement that we're making to that process. So as you know, according to state law, the Board is required to submit to the state audited financials 90 days after our fiscal end. In our case, the annual financial report consists of 10 distinct funds that get reported on about 25 separate statements with associated footnotes. And also, we prepare about 50 other financial-related schedules. We put it all together, and it's known as our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or the CAFR. So in order to accomplish this, we need various tools, such as a dedicated and trained staff. We also need help from our audit and actuarial partners, who you'll be hearing from right after me. And perhaps most importantly, we need a good system of internal controls. So by definition, internal controls are a system of policies and procedures designed to maintain the reliability of timely and accurate financial reporting. In addition to these, the controls are used to protect assets, to ensure compliance with federal, state, and local laws, and accomplish objectives and promote efficient operations. So what we're talking about here, when I mentioned internal controls, these are the rules that we have in place for timesheet and purchase order approvals, for bank reconciliations, for safeguarding of our cash and making timely deposits, for paying our vendors accurately and timely, and other numerous segregation of duties fall within these internal controls. These rules are so key to our financial operations that the auditors actually do a separate report on them, and they'll speak to that in their presentation. There's always had positive audits surrounding our controls. But one thing Dan Morela, Mr. Morela pointed out was, when he first came on, when was the last time we reviewed the effectiveness of these controls? So the review of our internal controls is actually an internal control in itself. So what Mr. Morela initiated was an internal control assessment team that I co-lead with Tom Clausen. And we have about a dozen or so staff members from different departments that are going to put a fresh set of eyes on these controls that we have in place. There's going to be three potential outcome of these reviews. One is that the control that we have in place is effective and that there's no need to change it. Two is that the control appears redundant, and we may consider changing it or eliminating it. And then three, we could find that the control could be improved, and we will work with the folks that use it to improve it. Another item I wanted to bring to your attention was that one of the management comments the auditors brought to us. Although we didn't have any findings in the audit, and I apologize in advance to Clifton for kind of spoiling the news there, the auditors will often present some recommendation to us to improve our reporting. So currently, our fiduciary funds, the funds that Susan Lau just spoke to you about earlier, are now not accounted for in our ERP system or the hub. We reconcile these funds every month to fund bank statements, but we do it on a spreadsheet and not within our new financial system. And we agree with the auditors that having the statements reconciled within the hub would improve controls and would make year-end reporting more efficient when it's all within the umbrella of our statement or system of record. However, since we just went live with the new system a few months ago, our plan to do this is going to be phased in over the next 12 months. So speaking about fiduciary funds, there's another financial reporting change on the horizon. This one was brought about by a new government accounting standard, number 84. We actually brought it to your attention in last year's Financial Fiscal Management Committee meeting. However, with COVID, many, if not all, of the GASB statements were actually pushed off a year. So this one won't take place until next year on next year's CAFR. But you will see the Student Activity Fund, or the IAF. It's no longer considered a fiduciary fund, and it's going to be reported in our governmental funds, either rolled into our general fund or separately as a special revenue fund. That's still to be determined. These funds have always been lumped in with our pension and OPEP funds on a separate section of the CAFR. But due to the fact that MCPS has a large amount of administrative control over these funds, we, we fall into the bucket where it has to be moved from fiduciary to governmental. And I just want to let you know, from a school perspective, nothing's really going to change on their part. The internal controls that I spoke about, they're all going to still be in place. It's just that the reporting of them next year will be on a different page or pages of the CAFR. I say pages because we had been used to just reporting a balance sheet that showed the total balance and total liabilities for this fund. Next year, we're also going to have to report the revenue, expenses, and we're going to have to show it on a budgetary basis either, now that it's going to be reported as a governmental fund. So that's about all I had for an introduction into the financial reporting. I'd be happy to take any questions before I pass it off to our auditors.
So Ms. O'Neil, Dr. Daca, any questions or comments? And I'll just turn to just Dan very quickly. So based on what Mr. Riley was just saying, do you, is there any kind of other context you'd like to share before we move on?
I'm very pleased with the result of this audit. It's, it's a clean opinion, which is terrific. The idea of placing additional emphasis on the internal control programs is something I'm very excited about. It's something that all organizations should be doing regularly. In time, I'm going to try to incorporate some of this internal control reviews to more of a strategic planning type of efforts. It's going to take a little bit of time, but right now I am really pleased with how Tom and Rob picked up the challenge to once again put some meat on the bones here for our internal control. What we had in place was fine, but I don't think we can over, overstate the need to continue to monitor and update those controls. So thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. So then I guess we're ready for the report of the External Auditor.
Okay. Rob, I'll take it from here, Rob.
Sure. If you want to introduce yourself and anybody else that's going to be presenting, that'd be great, Bill.
Yeah, no problem. So nice to see you all this morning. My name is Bill Early. I'm the Principal in Charge of the Account over here at CLA. I was assisted on this audit by a manager and now, now a new manager, Shannon Wees. She was the manager that assisted this year. And at the time, Jonathan Griffin was our senior, but he's recently been promoted to the ranks of manager. So Jonathan is joining me here this morning. We're going to present to you, we have a PowerPoint to present to you, but Dan and Rob stole a lot of the thunder there. All the good news, talking about, you know, how it's a clean opinion and, you know, no material weaknesses or significant efficiencies. So that's one of the highlights we like to point out, so we'll go through that.
You do know, excuse me, you do know if it was anything else, Rob and I would turn our cameras off right now. So thank you very much.
Yeah, and Dan and Rob, and to the committee, you should be very proud of, for somebody like Dan to come in, new to the organization, and the first thing he wants to address are making sure that you reevaluate your controls from an efficiency and effective standpoint. That if I was a committee member, I'd be very proud that, you know, of that. That's not something, it's something we tell our clients to be doing all the time. And as the auditors are like, yeah, we'll get to it, we have other pressing issues. So as auditors, we're extremely happy that MCPS is taking a look at its controls, both from an effective and an efficiency standpoint. So with that said, if we could pull up the PowerPoint. So we're going to go through a few things. Next slide, please. We're going to cover our financial statements results, the audit services that we perform, our required communications, our audit approach summary, and then our GASB update, which Rob also stole the thunder on. And then we'll answer any questions the committee may have. A next slide. So as a result of the financial process of June 30th, if anything in the annual comprehensive annual financial report, you do take a moment to read. The Management Discussion Analysis on pages 17 to 30 provides a very high-level financial analysis and comparison from year-to-year results. A very, it's very high level. So again, the whole report, and Rob, you correct me, it's 100 and some pages. I don't think we hit 200 just yet. But it includes a tremendous amount of detail, and I know it can be very overwhelming and to read. However, if you do read pages 17 to 30, that does give you the very high-level summary version. And I encourage, if nothing else, that you do pay attention to those pages. Overall, your government-wide financial statements, they present your financial statements for the, on the full accrual basis, including all long-term debt, almost as if you were a company operating. So any debts you have is included, any long-term assets, long-term liabilities. And then we get down to what's left, called a Statement of Net Position. And at the bottom, you'll see a total net position. The net position was $262.1 million for this year. Of that, 2,997 million was unrestricted. There's a big piece that is actually invested in your capital assets. So that's where the, the big piece lies. And you did have an increase this year in your net position of 101.2 million. Next slide. Your governmental fund statements, they operate on, and Rob mentioned it, the general fund, special revenue fund, capital projects funds, they operate on the modified accrual basis. So they don't report your long-term, long-term liabilities within them. So like net pension is not reported in the governmental funds, it's only at the government-wide. You had a total fund balance of 65.7 million. Most of that was committed, restricted, or assigned for the year. So at the end of the year, you had a total unassigned fund balance, which basically means it was not designated, assigned for any purpose at this point, was only $3 million left. Your change this year was $10 million. And the detail of fund balance can be seen on page 65 of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. The main fund within the statements, as Rob mentioned, I believe there's 10, but the main one to focus on is your general fund. That's where the general operations of the school system are. That had a total fund balance of 65.2, and that is where the $3 million of total unassigned fund balance resided last year. You did have a general fund change in fund balance of 9.9 million. Your revenues were 2.7 billion. Other financing sources, which comes from any issuance of long-term debt and some other non-operating revenues, would be 18.8 million. And then you're, you take those two, add them together, and subtract out your expenditures of 2.752 billion. Next slide. Now, the way the school systems actually kind of monitor their budget on a daily basis is, you do what's called a non-GAAP budgetary basis. So every year, the committee and the Board approves a budget, and it's submitted to the county who approves it to. So that is your day-to-day management tool that you use to manage your finances. So that is actually focused in the financial statements as well. There you had revenues this year were 53.3 million below budget, and expenses were 84.6 below budget. Very abnormal year, as most know, you know, March, April, May, June of last year, where we're just different for everybody. With the going to virtual, schools were closed for a period of time. That generated some savings, but also meant you didn't get all the revenue you would have from different sources, including even some federal funds for programs where they operate on a reimbursable basis. So you had to provide the service in order to get the funding. So that's why those numbers seem so extravagant this year. It's really because of those four months when you were operating under COVID and just the complete change in operations. Got to remember, your budget is done a year or more in advance. So nobody could foresee that, that pandemic coming. Your ending budgetary fund balance was almost in line with your, your gap one of 3.02 million. Budgetary expenditures over revenues was 21.5 compared to a budget decrease of 51.2. So you actually generated savings of 21.5 million this year. Budget actual statement can be found on page 40 of the report. So again, if you're looking at that MDNA, also since you do consider yourselves with budget actual, I would turn to page 40 at some point too and look at the details there. Per MSD requirements, there was no negative expenditure variance in any of the categories for this year. Next slide. So the audit services we perform, we do a financial statement as of June 30th. That's your fiscal year-end, and it's done in accordance with government auditing standards. Now, one of the differences, and I think Rob said that MSD was even in there currently doing audit, and you've had legislative audits before, and I always like to explain that those audits may have additional findings that don't come out of our audit. The difference with the audit of the financial statements and the single audit we perform is we use a materiality threshold. So we provide a reasonableness of the financial statements, opinion over the financial statements, not absolute assurance that everything's correct. So do we test every transaction that runs through the general ledger account? No. That is not the role of the financial audit. We use a sampling basis, materiality calculations to look at the, what we consider the significant areas and significant transactions. And then we do sampling over those areas that either we consider not to be material or the high-risk areas where there's a volume of transactions going around. We also look at your federal compliance. That's covered in the federal single audit, which is performed in accordance with what's called the Federal Law of Uniform Guidance. And that includes an audit of your schedule of expenditures of federal awards, commonly called the CIFA, and your certification of the data collection form, which is submitted to the federal clearinghouse and goes to OMB at the federal level. The Schedule of Federal Awards, it basically shows all of your grant expenditures that you made during the year that were received from federal funding, whether it's direct or passed through a state agency or other county. Um, most of yours come through, pass through the Maryland State Department of Education. Um, you do receive a few direct and some from Montgomery County, but. You know, I I think I don't know the percentage off the top of my head, but it's probably about ninety percent that come directly from passed through Maryland State Department of Education. Next slide. So after we perform all of our audit services, and that usually takes place in August and September. Um, and then we issued a report towards the end of September, this year was issued on September twenty ninth. Um, we issue three reports. Uh, we do a report on internal control, financial reporting and other compliance matters. We also issue a um report on each major federal program, which is commonly called our single audit report. And then what we issue is called a letter of governance communication. That governance communication is sent to you all as fiscal uh management committee, and I'm going to go over what was contained in that letter um this morning. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so the results of procedures, we uh performed our audit in accordance with the generally accepted auditing standards. And again, I mentioned before, it was to obtain reasonable and not absolute assurance about the financial statements. Um, we have access to accounting principles used, we test the significant estimates made by management. And then we evaluate the overall financial statement presentation um of your report. It's about a eight week process starting in August and goes through September. Um, again, we thank uh Rob and his staff, uh especially this year working through a remote audit situation. Um, we got through with very few hiccups. Um, you know, things might have taken a little bit longer, but you know, nothing extraordinary that we need to report to you, and we did issue by that September thirtieth deadline. So. Um, again, we only own the opinion in the statement. The financial statements are all put together by your staff at M C P S, Rob and his team. And they did an extraordinary job, given the circumstances this year, to get everything done timely. Next slide. So again, I mentioned, what do we own? We own the independent orders report. Uh, Dan mentioned before it was a unmodified opinion, which is commonly in the industry called the clean opinion. I'd mentioned it was dated September twenty ninth. Um, when I reported internal shows, as Dan and Rob mentioned, there was no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies reported. Um, however, we do issue a match letter, which Rob referred to. Um, and we had three comments there. And what these are, these are what we consider best practices. Um, again, you hire us to do the audit, you hire us for expertise, so we bring forward anything where any areas we think you could do better. Even if they're not a significant deficiency, or we found no mature weaknesses, we still say, hey, these are areas that we think you could do better and we bring to your attention. Um, so we had three areas with that. Jonathan, um, if you want to talk about those, I think Rob already addressed the fiduciary fund. So if you want to talk about the the second two?
Sure. Um, good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. Uh, I'll talk about that second uh comment there that relates to exchange revenue controls. It was related, uh, it was noted during our review of exchange revenue that there was no documentation pertaining to the identity of the preparer. And reviewer for claims reimbursements. Um, the reason why that's important is just just to make sure that when we're submitting claims reimbursements that they're both accurate and complete. And I spoke with the uh person responsible for that, and that is a control that they're going to make sure is implemented in the upcoming year. Uh, the third item relates to um the I A F funds. Um, there was one school where their independent activity fund had a balance over two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And the reason why that is uh was noted is because um F D I C insurance only covers up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And there is no additional collateral related to those I A F I A F funds to cover any excess over that two hundred fifty thousand dollar mark. Uh, we had a discussion with internal audit, they're aware of it. And they had notified the school that, hey, you know, any time your balances get over that, we need to move that that money to a separate account. Uh, it's just to make sure that any potential losses um are covered and and insured. And uh, that's that's it. Rob already mentioned the first one related to fiduciary fund. So uh, thank you for having me.
Next slide, please. Thanks, Jonathan. Uh, the single water report, um that was issued December eighteenth. It technically is not due until March thirty first. Um, it was granted a three month extension, but we were already uh prepared to go ahead and issue that. So we did. Again, an unmodified opinion, no material weakness or significant efficiencies were noted. You did qualify as a low risk audit T. And the major programs that we tested this year were child and adult food care and the special education cluster. Um, those programs get rotated every year based on um what's called a type A and type B program. Uh, I can tell you that for the twenty twenty-one audit, we will be testing um how the um school system is spending its um any cares money that is being received. Um, direct from the county, from MSD or from the federal government. Uh, next slide. So required communication, I talked about our letter of governance, I'm going to highlight those points real quick. Um, the scope and timing of the order proceeded as planned, again, especially during COVID, that's a tremendous um. A task that was put upon Rob and his crew, and they did a great job of completing that. Um, significant accounting policies are described in note one of the annual financial report. Um, we noticed that there was no none that um did not correspond with industry practices and best standards. Significant estimates within your financial statements are depreciation. Your net pension and O P have liability because they're calculated based on actuarial evaluations, which are um have significant assumptions tied to them. And then your self insurance, including your incurred but not reported, um basically because it looks at historical trend analysis to get the um calculation for the year. So. We looked at all those significant estimates, found that they were all within line um within industry practices, best standards and historical information. Next slide. We had no corrected or uncorrected adjustments. There was no difficulties outside of dealing with remote work during COVID. That we considered to deem normal during under the circumstances. We had no disagreements with management. There was no um discussion with them regarding our selection as auditors. Uh, no issues related to our group audit. You are a group audit because your financial statements do include the foundation for the school system. And then management did not consult with any other accountants on um the implementation of GAAP or Gatsby, which would be considered. Uh, opinion shopping, or if they disagreed with our stance, trying to go and seek a uh. Opinion that kind of went to their advantage. So there was none of that was noted. Next slide, please. Our audit approach, we do look at the higher um audit risk areas, as I mentioned before. Uh, we have revenue recognition, uh payables, pools and other liabilities. Um, majority of your expenditures, you know, are payroll related. So we do test of controls of our um payroll. And it's on high level analytics there. Um, and we test the efficiencies of those controls, which we noted um we're we're operating properly. Uh, we also do test your non payroll expenditures. Again, we do a test of control in that area and did not notice any issues. Um, we do also look at your I T environment. Um, we have I T specialists that we use, I T auditors, they come in, they look at on the controls both um. At the application level and the general I T controls. Uh, then we look at grant compliance and your financial statement disclosures. Those are the areas we deem to be higher risk. Next slide. Rob mentioned, so they were delayed. Um, so the next two Gatsby's that are coming at you. Are going to be Gatsby's saving number eighty-four, which Rob mentioned he's currently working on. And eighty, number eighty-seven, which would be leases, which will impact the future year. Uh, right now you have things that are operating leases, such as copier leases, maybe any space that you rent. Um, in the future, those actually would have to go on as um assets and liabilities um moving forward. So. We'll be working with Rob mainly on eighty-four the next year. Um, with all the school districts and getting that information. As Rob said, it's going to dramatically change the appearance of your financials. Um, you're going to have information included in your governmental funds that were never in there before. So. Next year we'll have some um comparisons that kind of going over the impact that that had on your financial statements. Next slide. With that said, I'll insert any questions you may have. I know that was a lot of information, a little bit of time. Um, so.
So, Bill, this is Dan. Before any questions, I just want to say that I have worked with many, many, many auditors over my career. It's been a pleasure working with you guys, really cooperative effort, and I really like how you guys bring value. To the to the to the product, telling us what we can do better. It's not that gotcha mentality, but it really was a great partnership. So I appreciate that, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, um, so I see both uh Dr. Daka and Ms. O'Neal have questions. So Dr. Daka.
Uh, yeah, I had a question about the two hundred fifty thousand dollars in the I A F, you know, that I would ask. Is that money planned to be spent somewhere or what are what are they doing with it?
Yeah, I I can jump on that quickly and then uh. Uh, MJ wants to join. Basically, they just had a tremendous amount of revenue on their, you know, their. Their outreach to families and stuff to contribute. I like to look at the, and I'm sure there are plans to spend it. I look at this like um. It's a wonderful life. When the bank had a run on it, in this case here, they're just. If if the bank were to be go under for whatever reason, not likely. The balance above the two fifty is gone. It's just, it's lost. So I think what we're saying here is we need to take these uh revenues and spread them across many different banking. Instruments instead of just the one. I have not seen an actual spend plan, but MJ may have.
I, and I was also curious how they got it, but that can be answered at some other time. Uh, because the schools that I have worked with don't come up with nearly that amount of money uh based on their activities.
They're very liquid. MJ, do you know if there's a proper a proper spend plan in place?
So it was just one school. Um, and they just had not been putting money into their C I F. And had been collecting money. So we had them move the money into the C I F to reduce it below the two fifty. Um, I don't know if there's a spend plan, but I don't, I do know that they put it into the C I F to reduce the amount in their checking account. And well, you know, when we get out there to do the audit, we can look to see, you know, the buildup. It's just that this particular school has a very generous foundation. And um P T S A and athletic booster. Um, and you know, just really does get a lot of donations and and money to help support them.
Um, Dr. Daka, did you have any follow up there?
Oh, I have another question, but I'll wait until uh Ms. O'Neal.
So um, an observation, you mentioned that uh next year, this upcoming audit would look at CARES Act. Um, you know, uh auditing or as part of the audit, and I think that's really critically important. Um, because I know community members have expressed um interests, desires, concerns, et cetera. About how CARES Act money is being spent or the need for us to spend it in different ways. And I know that it did have specific strings attached. So I think that auditing, that is a really critical piece uh going forward.
Thank you. Um, and Dr. Daka, you said you had another question.
Yeah, I I think that we're getting a new payroll system or we got one. Um, does that make a difference on how you audit? Um, I I'm just curious.
Yeah, so it it would make a difference on on how we audit um. In in a way, um as I mentioned, we use I T specialists that come in and they look at the application controls and the general controls around the payroll system. And also if by implementing um a new system, if there's any controls that are now done. Um, strictly electronically and in the system, we would test those controls through the system. So um, once we get with uh Rob, we'll go through all of that and then um design our procedures to test the new system um that's being implemented. And that that's anytime you do a new a new accounting or payroll system of any sort. So um, M C P S is. Um, they're very, you guys are very good about updating your your systems and not using archaic systems. So um, we've been through that a couple of times before with you guys.
They payroll does a fantastic, well, the whole department does fantastic job with all of the um differences in payroll, you know, the. The part time, the full time, the work, weeks worked, the reporting. So uh, they've always been really accurate.
Yeah, and um, I would just have a follow up, I think about two of those issues in one. And Dan, you and I talked about this um a month or so back. Uh, at with the um. Installation and opera opera. Operationalizing of the new finance system. Um, you know, having a a mechanism by which um our ten month employees are paid over twelve months. And in a very efficient and effective and um. Uh, you know, a manner that doesn't require a lot of extra steps. Is that something that we're getting to?
Absolutely. We um upgraded our payroll system, it may have been about a year and a half ago. But when we um implement our new H R system, that's going to be linked with a new payroll system too. And they're in the requirements gathering stage right now. And I've only asked for one requirement, and and that is exactly that paying what ten month employees. Over a twelve month period. I understand the benefit of that for all of our ten month employees. And that is a key and upfront requirement of the new system. So yes, we're watching that very, very closely.
Thank you. And then the question I have is sort of in follow up to Dr. Daka. Uh, we're looking at the independent activity funds, and I know this has been an issue. M C P S did an audit a couple of years back over all the two hundred and eight schools, uh independent activity funds, just looking for excessive. Um, fund balances. But uh, I guess my first question is, um, are the, what are the components of an I A F? Are it's, are those strictly contributions that come in from the community through? You know, a booster club, a foundation, or the, are there M C P S contributions?
So the the funds in the schools I A F are made up of various um things. Um, when it's good, they go field trips, they collect money for a field trip, they do try to make it as even as possible, but sometimes we have extra money. Um, as you said, we get donations from foundations and P T As. We get grants, we get parents who give donations. We do a lot of, a lot of the schools do a lot of fundraising to bring in a lot of money to support them. They do yearbook and they make money off of that. They do drama, they do athletics. So all of that goes into it. We, we try not to make any money on like course fees or exams. But we do have a lot of schools that do an enormous amount of fundraising and have support from outside areas to bring in that money.
So I guess one of the questions I would ask is, and I'm coming at this from sort of a P T A, P T S A, M C C P T A lens is. We very much emphasize when you're talking about, you know, an organization like a P T A. That it should, you shouldn't fundraise for anything that you're not going to be expending that year or have a very direct. Plan to spend that year because the people from whom you are raising money, you should be able to tell them very directly where that money. Where their donations and contributions are going to go. Are there any, do we have any qualifications, any requirements like that? On this kind of, I mean, a as Dr. Dr. Men- mentioned, a two hundred fifty thousand dollar I A F balance, and we're looking at it from a. Perspective of um financial security. And having those funds in the in the appropriate kinds of accounts so that they're protected. But I'm looking at them as why are they raising that kind of money if they don't have a plan for it?
I mean, a lot of times the P T As will have specific things they're raising money for, and it may be that they're raising money for um technology. And it may be a project that might span more than one year. But at this point. Uh, there's nothing in writing that says the money that comes into the school has to be expended right away. But most of the time, the money that. Does come into the P T A, they're reimbursing the school. Or supporting them for a project that they do have a spending plan for.
Dr. Daka?
Yeah, I'm still on the I A F. I'm just, you know, stunned about the amount of money. It just shows the inequities across the system. Some schools are able to raise some money. And other schools are not, and there's no way that we're sharing. I think there was at one time. A five percent plan where we would take some from the schools that really raised a lot. And I know this isn't. This isn't your problem, but it brings to uh mind that this kind of thing does really happen. So. Oh, I'm about your uh ten month and twelve month. Uh, we did this before when I first came to the system. So. It's not a new program, but I'm glad that we're going to be technologically available to do it in a better way.
Yeah, oh, yeah, uh Ms. O'Neal.
Yeah, um, so I wanted to speak about the fundraising, you know, there had been an effort, we, I know, both Dr. Starr and Dr. Smith have. Put organized committees to look at, could there be an equity fund across schools? Um, and then I also want to note that um we have two policies, policy C N E. And policy C N D, and one is related to fundraising, uh P T As and booster clubs, et cetera. And then uh the other is related to uh non capital um. Uh, contributions or expenditures that are not funded by governmental obligations. And you know, perhaps uh more guidance on the I A Fs need to be in place. Um, because I agree with Ms. Um, Harris that, you know, we had. P T As should. PTAs should be spending money for students who are currently in the school, not for necessarily for future. But um, you know, how do how do we get to that large balance i- in terms of the board's policies uh related to fundraising? And I also know, you know, like, yes, there is money that goes in there for yearbooks. Um, also s- school photographs. I mean, uh, you know, the every school, when we have the school pictures taken, there's, you know, contracts that the principals sign. So um, maybe it's an area that we need to go back to looking at establishing an equity fund because not every school has the capa- capacity to raise money or to have uh foundations that support efforts.
Yeah, I'd agree, uh, Ms. O'Neil. This has been an issue that we've been looking at for many years and it um haven't seemed to be able to crack the nut. And just putting this out there before we move on, maybe this is an issue that the fiscal management committee and the policy management committee can look at jointly. Uh, a review of those policies and um looking to see if they are being act followed and school to school and um if how we can track that. Because I, you know, uh, this is just one other issue way in which we do see stark inequity school to school.
Right, because we also have gotten in the past, although I don't remember when the last time we saw it, was an annual report from um facilities management about how the actual dollar amount of capital contributions to schools, you know, whether it was picnic tables or improvements to a central courtyard, et cetera. But we did get an itemized report on an annual basis um from facilities management. And you know, the policy does call for uh where schools want to have permission to spend above $50,000 for a capital coun- uh capital improvement, it has to come to the full board. So um, maybe as a follow-up, we should look to see, you know, uh, when that report would be coming to the full board about uh improvements that were funded by PTAs or foundation contributions. But also, are there any uh requests for such improvements in the pipeline?
So Dan, would that be a report that comes from you or would that come from Seth Adams in facilities?
It comes from Seth Adams.
Okay, alright. Um, and then I guess the one last question I have, just for a point of information and clarification for me. Are there any MCPS centralized contributions that go into the IAFs? Or is this all external donations, fundraising, you know, grants and things like that that are generated by the energy of an individual school community and the volunteers?
So I can let MJ tell me if I'm wrong, but there's no direct MCPS contributions to individual IAF accounts.
No, that we would get um reimbursements, but we also do get the cell tower, but not again, not every school gets cell tower, and it's very disproportionate what one school will get compared to another school for the cell tower. ICB is the same kind of thing. If your school is lucky to be rented, you'd get a lot of ICB, but no central donations from MCPS at this point.
So ICB and cell tower fu- um revenues would go into an IAF?
Yes.
Okay, so that, I mean, that is in the, I mean, the the ICB component's real. Some schools are far more desirable when it comes to community use, so.
There are some schools that get an enormous amount of ICB money, CERT money if they're active in the CERT program, and uh the cell tower, if they're lucky enough to have the cell towers.
Okay, so those are three areas we could look at as well. Okay, um, so I'll just d- um circle back. Dr. Daca, Ms. O'Neil, any other questions before we move on? Okay, so I think now that takes us to item five, which is actuarial valuations. So I think that's uh Dan, Rob?
So Rob, if you want to introduce our actuaries and uh we can get to the slide deck, it's a pretty hefty slide deck, so we should probably get moving with it.
Sure. So we've been working with our actuaries uh for about the last four or five years, uh three or four years. And I had mentioned how the actuaries play a part in our financial reporting because a lot of what they do when they assess our liabilities affect on our government-wide statements. But in addition to that, they also um play a part in what our um contributions um should be from an actuary standpoint um for the current, the next year budget. So they're kind of playing in FY22 as well as helping us finish in FY20. Uh, so with that said, we have uh Amy Williams and Lance Weiss here to present their actuarial reports.
Thanks, Rob. Um, good morning. Um, we are going to do a brief overview of the actuarial valy- valuation results for the retirement and pension systems and the OPAB plan measured as of July 1st, 2020. So we'll be talking about certain slides. We're going to skip over some other ones, but we're happy to refer back to those slides if needed. So um, we'll start on slide four, please. So there were some changes from the prior year's actuarial valuation regarding the plan provisions. Um, the first change is that employees, non-invested employees who terminate after June 30th, 2020 will not accrue interest on their accumulated contributions. And the next two changes are related to members receiving disability benefits. So the first is for members receiving service-related disability benefits. The benefit will revert to the normal retirement benefit upon attainment of the normal retirement date. And then for non-service-related disability, members will receive service credits um for the duration until the member attains normal retirement date. So these um plan provision changes did have a small financial impact on the actuarial valuation, which we'll see in an upcoming slide. Uh, next slide, please. We are um amortizing the change attributable to those plan changes over a 15-year closed period as a level percent of payroll. And there were no changes to the actuarial assumptions from the last actuarial valuation as of July 1st, 2019. We do recommend a review of the price inflation assumption of 2.5% and the investment return assumption of 7% before we perform the next actuarial valuation as of July 1st, 2021, because market conditions have been volatile and expectations may be changing. Next slide, please. On this slide, uh, we have a summary of the actuarial evaluation results for the retirement and pension systems. We have side-by-side results, the left-hand side of the column. The left-hand column is from the last valuation as of July 1st, 2019. The right hand is July 1st, 2020. The top section, we have some membership information. So the total membership of the system is up. Uh, it's 45,888 members measured as of July 1st, 2020. About 24,000 are active members. There was an increase of 720 active members compared to last year. About 14,200 um members currently receiving benefits, an increase of 181 from last year. Uh, the next section, the middle section, we have a summary of the actuarial accrued liabilities or the benefit obligations um of the system. The actuarial accrued liability increased by about 84 million to 2.275 billion measured as of July 1st, 2020. The next row under that is the asset value. It's the actuarial value of assets, um which is a smooth asset value that we use for purposes of the actuarial evaluations in order to smooth out some volatility over a five-year period. The asset value increased by 95 million um from July 1st, 2019 to July 1st, 20 Sorry. The funded actuarial accrued liability.
Hey, Amy, you seem to have broken up there. You might want to repeat that.
Okay, sorry. Um, the actuarial value of assets is the smooth asset value, and that amount has increased by 95 million since the last actuarial valuation and is 1.926 billion as of July 1st, 2020. The difference between the actuarial accrued liability and the actuarial value of assets is the unfunded actuarial accrued liability. And that amount has decreased by 11 million to about 350 million as of July 1st, 2020. Um, the funded position or funded ratio is the relationship of the assets divided by the liabilities. And that has increased from 83.5% to 84.6% as of July 1st, 2020, based on the smooth asset value. And then when we look at the same metric based on the market value of assets where we do not use the asset smoothing, the funded ratio has decreased slightly from 82.5% to 80.5%. Um, next slide, please. And um, uh, next slide after that. On this slide right here, we give a summary of the contribution requirement, and we show the different components going into that. So first of all, the contribution rate has decreased from the last actuarial valuation to this actuarial valuation. So the contribution rate for fiscal year 2021, which was determined in last valuation, was 3.81% of pay, and that has decreased to 3.67% of pay measured as of this most recent valuation that applies to fiscal year 2022. Um, the contribution requirement is divided into different components. The first row is the board normal cost. So that's the contribution that's attributable to the benefits accruing in the upcoming year. So that's about half of the contribution rate or 1.81% of pay out of the total 3.67% of pay. Then the second row is the portion of the contribution to amortize or pay off that unfunded liability that was measured as of three, as of June or July 1st, 2020, that was about 350 million. That contribution rate um is about 1.86% of pay to get to the total of 3.67%. And then we also have um the components um between the core benefits and the supplemental benefits. So the supplemental benefits are the benefits payable to both staff and the teachers. And the core benefits are the benefits that are payable to the staff only. So then about half of that contribution uh rate is for the um supplemental benefits and about little less than half of it is for the core benefits. And because the plan is less than 100% funded, the board may want to consider contributing um a rate in fiscal year 2022 that is at least equal to the fiscal year 2021 rate, so not decrease the rate um to the 3.67 from the 3.81. However, um, even if the funding policy is followed, um, the system is in in very good shape. You know, having seen an increase in the funded status um from last year.
Um, Amy, this is Dan. Just a quick question. Um, could you mention just very, very quickly what these primary drivers are for your estimates? I know population, that I know anticipated inflation, but what else are some of the drivers that are included in your estimates?
Um, when we perform the actuarial valuation, we take the census data, the covered member data. Um, we have the plan provisions, so um we need to know what benefits are payable when members retire, otherwise leave the system. We need to make assumptions about future events, so we use a set of actuarial assumptions. So that includes the rate of investment return, um, which we assume assets will earn 7%. We make assumptions on salary increases, mortality rates, how long members are going to live, um, receive benefits, termination rates, um, what percentage of members are going to terminate before they're eligible for retirement benefits versus making it to retirement. Um, we have retirement rates. Not every member's going to retire at earliest eligibility. Um, and then those components go into calculating the present value of benefits, actuarial accrued liability. And then we use a funding policy in order to calculate the contribution requirements, in order to determine how the cost of those benefits will be paid over time.
Thank you very much, Amy. It was very helpful.
Um, let's see, we can skip the next slide and then go to, let's see if it's slide 10, yes, for here. Um, on this slide, we have a reconciliation to explain why the contribution rate and the funded ratio changed from last year to this year, and what were the key drivers of those changes. Um, in the top row, we have the results from the valuation as of July 1st, 2019. So on the left is the board contribution rate with last year was determined to be 3.81% for fiscal year 2021, and the funded ratio was 83.5%. If all assumptions had been realized that we used in the actuarial valuation, we would have expected that the contribution rate would have decreased to 3.65% of pay, and the funded ratio would have increased to 85.3%. However, we're never going to see assumptions that are exactly realized each and every year. So then the next section gives a reconciliation of what those deviations were and what were the sources of the deviation. So the first line is recognition of asset gains and losses. Um, and this is um driven by investment performance. So we had estimated that the market value of assets for the pension system returned about 1.1% compared to the actuarial assumption of 7%. However, we do use our asset smoothing method, and we recognize um the gain or loss compared to the 7% over a five-year period. So when we incorporate that asset smoothing method, the return on the actuarial value of assets was about 5%, which is still lower than the assumption of 7%, so that increased the contribution rate by 0.2% of pay, decreased the funded ratio by 1.6%. Um, salary deviations was negligible in terms of impacting the actuarial valuation results. Um, COLA increases, the um increases to retiree benefits were lower than assumed due to CPI being lower. So that was a gain, decreased the contribution rate, increased the funded ratio. Additional contributions in fiscal year 2021 estimated at about 9.8 million higher than what we had calculated under the funding policy. So those extra contributions helped increase the funded ratio, decreased the contribution rate. Demographic experience and other, that's how deviations in retirement rates, termination, mortality, et cetera, it affects the valuation results. So there was a slight gain there, decrease in the contribution rate, increase in the funded ratio. Um, no assumption changes this year, so no impact and plan changes. Um, those changes that I described at the beginning of the presentation slightly decreased the contribution rate. So overall, the change from expected was uh an increase of 0.02% higher than what we had expected on the contribution rate and a decrease of 0.7% in the funded ratio to get us to those final um results that we had talked about on the previous slide. So contribution rate of 3.67% of pay, funded ratio based on ass- assets, smooth assets of 84.6%. Next slide, please. On this slide, we have a historical look and also some projections of the funded ratio and the board contribution rate. So we start with the results from the 2016 valuation, which um determined the fiscal year 2018 contribution rate. So at that point, the funded ratio So at that point, the funded ratio based on the smoother actuarial value of assets, which is the red line, was 81%. The contribution rate was 4.68%. There were some assumption changes that occurred 2017, 2019, which accounted for those large changes in the funded ratio between those states. And then if you look to about the middle of the slide, these are the valuation results that we just calculated. So the 84.6% funded ratio, 80.5% on the market value of assets, 3.67% contribution rate. So if all assumptions are realized, no changes in plan provisions, no changes in assumptions, new deviations from the contribution rates that were calculated in the actuarial valuation, we would expect that the funded ratio would rise a little bit in over the next five years. So as of July 1st, 2025, the funded ratio would be about 85.4%. And you'll see that the market value of assets funded ratio is expected to increase from the 80.5% to meet the actuarial value after that five-year period. So then in 2024 and 2025, we're projecting the same funded ratio for both market value and actuarial value. And some slight differences in the contribution rates as actuarial gains and losses are smoothed into the assets. So the contribution rate remaining, you know, between about 3.6% and 3.8% of pay. And with that, we'll turn and do a brief summary of the OPAH valuation results. Happy to take any questions on pension now or all at the end. Okay, we can move to slide 13. Now we're going to be looking at the OPAH actuarial valuation results. There were changes in actuarial assumptions that are detailed here, most of them relate to the trend rates or how we assume that the cost of medical and prescription drug, dental and vision, how those costs are going to increase over time. So we did make some changes to those assumed trend rates. We looked at claims information through June 30th, 2020 as our starting point for the costs. And we did make a change in the load we applied to the actuarial accrued liability to account for removing the excise tax impact. So next slide, please. On this slide, it looks simple. Had for pension, we've got the membership information at the top, the actuarial accrued liabilities in the middle, then the assets funded ratio and funded liability. So for the OPAH plan, there was an increase in the unfunded liability from last year. The unfunded liability increased by about 30 million to about 1.2 billion as of July 1st, 2020. Slight increase in the funded ratio to 31.7%. You can go two slides, please. On this slide, we have a reconciliation, looks very similar to the pension one. We've got our results from last year at the top. We've got the expected values. We would have expected a slight increase in the county contribution rate and the funded ratio if all assumptions had been realized. Of course, they weren't. The biggest driver on the funded ratio was the investment or asset experience. And for the OPAH plan, we're looking at the market value of assets. We're not using asset smoothing for the OPAH plan. There were changes in assumptions for OPAH, so we have a component for that. So overall, the funded ratio was slightly lower than what we would have expected if all assumptions were realized and the county contribution rate is slightly higher. So it's 8.34% of pay for the contribution rate, 31.7% for the funded ratio. Next slide, please. On this slide, we have a historical look at the contribution requirements and the funded ratio for the OPAH plan. So there has been an upward trend in the funded ratio, which is of course, you know, favorable and what we would like to see there. So back in 2015, the funded ratio was about 19%. It's about 32% as of July 1st, 2020. And then if you can skip the next slide and then go to the slide after that, please. And then finally, the, there is a contribution policy to contribute the normal cost plus 30-year amortization of the unfunded liability for the OPAH plan. However, the actual contributions that have been made have been lower than that contribution policy. So we would recommend that the county resume contributing the actuarially determined contribution in order to continue pre-funding the OPAH plan. And those amounts are detailed on this slide. So if we look at fiscal year 2021 and 2022, if we go to the very right, the contribution would be the pay-as-you-go benefits or the benefits payable in the given year plus an additional contribution in excess of pay-as-you-go. So it's about 75 million for fiscal year 2021 and estimated about 73 million for fiscal year 2022. And with that, happy to take any questions.
First, Dr. Dhaka and Ms. O'Neill, any questions from you?
Yeah, I do have a question back on slide four. And I'm making a disclaimer, I have a disability, but it doesn't have, didn't have anything to do with the work that I did for MCPS nor as on the board. So the question, I was also on risk management for the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. So these things are interesting to me. I know that they said most of the disabilities within the school system, and this is all over the state, are slips and falls. So we know that that's an issue we have to work with. But I was concerned that disability benefits only accrue until you retire, even if it's school-related. I don't understand that are work-related.
If I recall, Dr. Dhaka, what we did there is if it was a school-based accident, we would determine the benefit based on your earliest retirement eligibility date. So if you were 40 years old with a number of years of services, we would calculate looking forward to what that initial calculation would be so that you would not lose benefit of all the years you would have worked based on that fall or disability. So we tried to take into account, we looked forward and then ultimately you would catch up and then the increases would stop because that would be your basic annuity under the disability had you been at the proper eligibility date, age and years.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Dr. Dhaka and Ms. O'Neill? Okay. You know, I could ask a lot of questions because I'm not a finance person, but we can do that later.
You know, Ms. Harris, this stuff very much interests me too. I spent a lot of years working with actuaries at the Office of Personal Management. And I would love at some point of our actuarial friends here would come in and maybe just do like an hour overview brief with whoever's interested, just to get some of the information behind what they do. It's really fascinating how they come up with these estimates. And if anybody was interested, I would be glad to reach out to our friends here at the firm and just get a general briefing on what it is they do and how they base their estimates. The level of detail is phenomenal. It is really a science. So if anybody wants that, please let me know and I'll reach out.
We'd be absolutely pleased to do that. We have a number of presentations, you know, ranging from very basic to intermediate to advanced. And so we'd be happy to come in and do a presentation on, you know, in effect, what is a valuation? And what do we look at and how do we get our results? So we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I mean, if people understand the real dollars behind these financial statements are right there. Those are where the dollars are. It's not the year-to-year operating expenses, but your long-term liabilities and how they're calculated and how we fund them. So that's really where the dollars are in any kind of corporation or government entity. I would love to do that.
You're absolutely right, Dan.
Ms. O'Neill.
So one of the tensions every year in the budget, since the county has taken over the OPAH, is the contribution. And it will be particularly difficult in challenging fiscal times. And not having pension and other post-employment benefits funded to the true liability ahead is where municipalities and other governmental organizations get into, well, and even private business, have gotten themselves into trouble. But that contribution, that central contribution, you know, which you recommended, you know, funding to the maximum, or I forget which are exact words, will be a challenge with the county's fiscal health.
Yeah, of course. We fully understand that. We have that situation with pretty much all of our clients, especially now given, you know, the environment we're in with, you know, COVID-19. It's challenging. It's challenging to fund it. You know, as actuaries, our role, we believe, is to tell you what you should be doing. And at the same time, we do recognize though, that there are going to be financial challenges. So again, as the independent actuary, we want to tell you what you need to do to make sure that, you know, the monies are there to pay the benefits. And at the same time though, as I said, we do recognize that there will be financial challenges as we go along. At the same time, and somebody, I think, you know, mentioned this early on, this is a long-term plan. You know, this is not a short term. We're in it for the long term. We want to make sure that the monies are there. Not everyone is retiring tomorrow. Not everyone is, you know, collecting a post-retirement medical benefit. So, you know, I just want to, you know, mention that you're on the right path, the funding ratios are going up. And we encourage you to continue to do that. But at the same time, for the OPAH plan, yeah, we just, we want to mention again, as your independent actuary, that it's going to be challenging. So, and you all know that, of course.
Yep. And it's also very interesting when you look at different philosophies. I know at the federal level, they try to hold back and have a large balance for life insurance benefits on the off chance that every federal employee dies tomorrow. So and that's an assumption they made. It's, I think it's a bit over dramatic, but those are the kind of assumptions that we, where we work with you guys as part of these calculations. And it really is fascinating and it makes a huge difference in our, difference in our financial statements. So thank you.
And I would, I mean, I would be very interested in taking you up on that offer, Mr. Weiss and Dan, to set up sort of a time when we can sort of go over for those interested on the board and on the staff, getting a better grounding in this work and the assumptions that go into it and how you do your forecasting and your financial analysis.
We'd be pleased to do that.
So maybe we can, Elsie, maybe we can sort of, and Dan, we can look at calendars and with Mr. Weiss and come up with the time to set that up.
Absolutely.
We'll put it on the follow-ups.
Thanks. Okay, any other questions before we move on, Dr. Dhaka and Ms. O'Neill? Okay, so that takes us to, in our section six updates. First off, overview of our ongoing state legislative audit. So I think we're going back to you, Dan, and to you, Rob.
Yeah, I think if we hear the word audit, the next word is always Rob. So thanks, Rob.
All righty. So this is just a brief update. So at the start of this calendar year, the Maryland Office of Legislative Audits, or OLA, began their Financial Management Practices Audit of MCPS as required by the Annotated Code of Maryland. So this will be OLA's third audit of MCPS and it occurs every six years. So the scope, the audit scope for this audit is actually the last six years. I was asked to be the audit liaison for this audit because there's many similarities with our annual audit and pulling the data. I'm kind of reaching out to the same folks in different departments and different divisions to pull that data for us and for the orders. The difference is now, instead of just pulling our prior year data that we do for Clifton, CLA, we're pulling six years. And also in addition, it's not really just within the Office of Finance. It's also looking at, and they're taking a deep dive into IT, HR, transportation and others. And this audit probably sounds familiar to some of you because the Fiscal Management Committee plays an important part in this audit because you guys were involved in the corrective action that we took at the conclusion of the prior audit. So we're going to be looking for you guys for assistance on that too. But also, we just thought it would be a good idea to keep you informed as the audit progresses because the audit actually is going to take at least six months. It could take up to a year. So the plan is I'll provide you with updates as they come in each of these Fiscal Management Committee meetings. I just wanted to read from the letter what the actual objectives of this audit are compared to the other audits. So the objectives are to evaluate whether MCPS's procedures and controls were effective in accounting for and safeguarding its assets and evaluate whether MCPS's policies provided the efficient use of financial resources. So you're probably getting tired of hearing these words, internal controls and all, but it's a, it's a big part of all the audits we do. So this one, like I said, is focusing on safeguarding of assets and efficient use of our financial resources. So with that said, there's really not too much to update at this point. They provided a list of materials to get them started and I filtered that out to all the different department heads and different people within our organization. And we'll be coming back with questions and I'll provide you, if there's any, there's not going to be any recommendations at first, but if there's any issues, I'm going to keep you guys informed for the spirit of transparency as we go along. So I don't know if you have any questions at this point. I just wanted to let you know that the process has started for this audit.
Dr. Dhaka, Ms. O'Neill, any questions? The only question I have, Rob, is just what's the timeline for this process and the working with OLA?
So they say minimum of six months. It could take up to a year. You know, talking to other peers at other counties, sometimes it goes into a year and a half. A lot of times that is because the scope is so broad, it's, it's the auditors deciphering that information that they get and coming up with recommendations. Also too, just to inform you, so I mentioned IT. IT actually, they do separately. So they're going to be concurrently. So they're going to start next month or March. They're going to be looking at IT with the IT folks as well too. What happens is they'll be working with their people because their information is a lot more detailed than what we do on our normal audit. So they do this across all the other LEAs. They dig deep. And then at the end, the report is going to have all the recommendations from them for IT as well as all the other operating units. And we'll be sharing that with you as well too. Regarding the IT portion, I don't know if you guys are aware, I think it was Baltimore County or one of the other school districts did have a ransomware incident and the, the slate voters were quick to point out to me that they actually had that as a finding in their previous audit. So I always look at audits and I think Dan does too, not as, they're not against us, they're here to help us. Sometimes the hard part is translating that information to staff and the people that are pulling the data because it does take time. But in the long run, the benefits of having audits, even though we're, we have a lot of them, the benefits only make us even better and our internal controls even better. That'll be the last time I say internal controls. I apologize.
No, and I mean, I thank you. And I think, you know, having been deeply involved in the running of a 501(c)(3) organization that had some fiscal mismanagement, I agree with you. I look at an audit as an opportunity to tell us what we're doing well and how we need to improve. And I guess my last question to you is, so moving forward in the process and the, you know, and the end product of the review, an audit, so what, from the Fiscal Management Committee's perspective, is this going to result in any action items for us? And I, this is me, new person, asking because I don't know.
Yeah. So just to give you an idea, in our last audit, I didn't post that in the board docs, but they are posted on the OLA site. We had 15 recommendations. I like to use the word recommendation other than findings because to use the word recommendation other than findings because there's a stigma to the word findings. So, the fiscal management did play an important, a key part in addressing those corrective actions. Now that we have this internal control, sorry, I said it again, assessment team in place, the homework that we gave them was to review prior audits as well, too. Because we did, we do do the corrective action, and I know it's in place, but just to show them the process, because some of them are coming from a, are new to this term, new to these terms. And the people on this committee or on this team, the assessment team, they're using it as a professional development opportunity as well, too. And like I said, what I find beneficial is that they're, the fact that they are coming from outside, not normal financial areas, they're getting a fresh set of eyes on that to look at some things that maybe got by us or maybe things that we can consider and say, hey, that will make that more effective. I don't know if that answered your question. I'm sorry.
No, I think it did. So, we will just be looking forward to the work ahead. And Dan, anything else on that?
No, I think not. I just want to mention that I always like to put the emphasis on the corrective action plans as much as the findings or the recommendations themselves because recommendations without follow-up, shame on us. So, thank you.
And so, just looking, Dr. Daca, Ms. O'Neil, any other comments or questions before we move on? Okay. So, that takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is the process for schools sign up for after-school activities funds. And it looks like Ms. Labatt is on the agenda to give us that information and update.
Hi, good afternoon. What is it, morning? It's still a little bit into the morning. It's a good morning, and thank you. And this is a continuing subject, and I know the last time we shared an update around extracurricular activities, it was really focused on an allocation that the board made for the FY '20 board funding and provided some additional allocations. So, I thought it might be helpful, just because, Ms. Harris, you're new to this committee as well, just besides talking about that specific allocation, to give a brief overview of the process in general around signing up for extracurricular activities. A little interesting, since earlier in this presentation, there was also a conversation about fund balances associated with that. So, for the extracurricular activities, it's an annual process around the allocation. Schools receive funding for extracurricular Class 1 and extracurricular Class 3 hours, and then there are some that are stipend allocations, and that is a per association negotiated agreement that that stipend allocation is $15 per hour. And that's important later for the conversation around the additional funding the board made. The difference between the Class 1 and Class 3 hours is that the Class 3 hours refer to both athletic and non-athletic activities, but they are a very specific group of activities that fall into that category, and they have a predetermined stipend. For example, in elementary schools, the choral director is a stipended activity. There's a set amount that they receive based on predetermined factors about how many hours and commitment that would have. Middle schools and high schools have student service learning coordinators. It's a set stipend for accepting the responsibility of that position based on predetermined activities. So, those are Class 3 hours, and it's just a few extracurricular activities that fall into that category. Class 1 hours, schools use their independent activity funds, the IAF fund, and they purchase extracurricular activity Class 1 hours. And they're really for programs that the school develop at the local level. So, a school may say, we want to do an enrichment activity for talent show or an enrichment activity around reading. And so, it's developed at the local school level. They submit a plan with how many hours. There's a limit for 100 hours per activity. So, if they want to initiate this reading program, they have 100 hours of Class 1 hours that they can use for that, spread out amongst the teachers or staff that are supporting that activity. And that is reviewed and approved. So, I just wanted to give some background around what goes into planning for extracurricular activities. And then, for hiring staff, there are some staff eligibility guidelines that are negotiated by union. For example, McCAP union members may not receive a stipend or allocation for sponsoring an extracurricular activity. MCA members are bound by their contractual hours, so their workday, so you can't have stipend allocated for support provided during your normal work hours. And if you are, if the school is hosting one of these activities, it needs to first be offered to MCA members at that school. So, if I am at a particular school, I should not offer this opportunity to staff from another school until I have at first offered it to my own staff and exhausted that possibility. So, we want to do that type of thing. And for SEIU members, we have a similar criteria around them working outside of their allocated work shift hours at their home school as opposed to another school in those same parameters so that we're offering that fair opportunity for staff that are involved. So, would you like me to continue, or is this a good question point?
Any questions, Dr. Daca, Ms. O'Neil? I think I just have one, and that is, and I think you answered it, but just for my own point of clarification. So, when we're looking at our associations and individuals that might serve as advisors to various activities, are SEIU employees are, they can serve as advisors to some of the extracurricular activities that happen in their or other schools? Is that correct?
As long as it is not a conflict with their work hours and based on the timing of many of these activities, that leaves a very limited window where SEIU members would be eligible.
Thank you.
All right. So, then continuing, in addition to those Class 1, Class 3 activities, for middle schools, we have a separate category. It's called the Middle School Achievement Focus Extracurricular Activity Program. So, sometimes it's referred to as AFEP as an acronym. And this is in addition to the allocation of the Class 1 hours. This category was developed by the system to provide some strategic priority support, to reduce achievement gaps, and really to engage some of our traditionally students that are underrepresented in activities and leadership roles. That's not to say that the funds, and it should say that the funds are open to any students that are in the school's population, but the intention behind developing these programs is really to engage those students who may not have seen themselves in some of the other activities the school already offered. And they are to focus these activities on academic and leadership roles specifically. So, one of the criteria when schools are applying for those funds is to really look at activities like in the STEM areas because that's a strong area of emphasis for students. And to have things like young scholars programs, the minority scholars programs, which we are trying to engage a certain population of students, but we have it open for anyone who is a student that is enrolled in the school. Again, these funds are in addition to the Class 1, Class 3 we already talked about. The allocations are made to the schools based on their enrollment. And so, every middle school gets an AFEP allocation, but we also apply a sliding scale to that where some of our schools that are most impacted receive a differentiated amount based on their forms numbers. So, those are the middle schools. So, every school gets allocations. There is some differentiation applied based on what we have seen as trend and patterns and where we need support. And these, the AFEP is automatically assigned. Schools do not have to apply for them. It's just part of our annual process and making the allocations to schools. So, then that brings us to the additional $100,000 that was allocated by the board for the FY '20 budget. And that funding was really to provide some incentive money to schools around developing and implementing some new, more innovative programs. We really wanted to increase student engagement, socialization, creativity. And the division was made to split that $100,000 between allocation to elementary schools. And I think there had been discussion about secondary schools. And then, because of the level of fundraising and other activities that support high schools, the remaining 50 really we targeted for middle school engagement. The original allocations went out to, I believe, 21 schools at the elementary level and 20 schools at the middle school level. And as I had shared with the committee previously, we really had a difficult challenge because of all the other allocations that schools received, trying to find schools that could really maximize this given opportunity on top of what they already had in place. And we really tried to work with schools and encourage schools. So, the initial schools that we offered this money to were having difficulty. And for example, one of the schools, in addition to the allocations we gave them, they also had partnerships with Excel Beyond the Bell. They had a mentoring program. They were working with Linkages to Learning. They had a partnership with the Capital Area Food Bank. And all of these things also require staff to help support. So, it became this confluence of additional impact in a way we did not want to see on schools because they felt stressed to put something else in front of staff and students. So, we had to really rethink, and we then we offered it up to a broader section of schools to take advantage of that. And some schools were able to, others were not. That got, that was compounded in the spring by school closures and trying to find other ways for schools to engage in the extracurricular activities. So, I'll pause there to see if there are any questions.
Dr. Daca, Ms. O'Neil.
So, you know, the board had good intentions with this. The belief, our premise, was that more affluent schools have more opportunities for extracurricular activities at their schools. And we wanted to try to level that playing field. But what you're saying is basically there are other ways that schools receive supports to do this. I think the thing is, how do we develop within those schools, within all of our schools, a creative way to meet student needs in the after-school arena?
And that's a great question. And I know hindsight is 2020, and maybe Mrs. Shella Cherry should have also been invited for this presentation, as you're aware. She's the Director for Student Leadership and Extracurricular Activities. And I know one thing that COVID has brought us many things, but one of the things that it has brought us is a way of rethinking what the traditional sense of extracurricular looks like. I know that there are many schools that have launched innovative ways. I mean, they're doing creative things for students to help bridge some of that gap and provide some of the socialization in a virtual world. And for one of the challenges that schools have in finding the time, because maybe I might be willing to support an extracurricular activity, but I needed to also arrange for childcare. I needed to have transition time. My students might not have been able to stay after school before, but now that we're in a virtual setting, they're finding ways to implement and have students stay engaged and connected socially in a virtual manner. I know there's one middle school where a staff member has done language classes and also done music classes, and they're doing productions in a virtual manner. They've done talent shows in a virtual manner, and it's a way for kids to stay engaged. And staff have been able to come up with things that they didn't think they could have implemented in the in-person format before because of other structural barriers that they're now finding. And we could have Ms. Cherry provide some follow-up around that for the board. But to your point, it has created a space for us to think a little bit differently about how we implement, and schools are rising to the occasion.
And I also want to note that our policy on academic requirements or GPA requirements for extracurricular and athletic activities is, has been out for public comment. And one of the things in the recommendation that's out in the policy is removing the academic eligibility requirement for all extracurricular activities except for athletics and changes, you know, there on the athletic side so that ninth graders would be eligible all the way for three quarters of the year of their freshman year. So, I, you know, the board really does have it at heart to make activities more available for students because we know the link between activities and feeling that connection to school.
Yeah, thank you. And just a quick question, Ms. Labatt. So, if we have a total of 41 middle and elementary schools who took advantage of the $100,000 kind of pilot, were that relatively even? So, each school got about $2,000 or?
To the earlier conversation, we applied a differentiated scale. And then, given that differentiation initially, some schools said, well, you know what, I could really do more if I had XYZ. And because some other school was finding it challenging to get staff to support an implementation of an additional activity, we were able to then further adjust to do that. So, it was not evenly applied. We applied a differentiated lens based on enrollment and forms rates, poverty rates, early on in the process.
Okay. Dr. Daca, Ms. O'Neil, any other follow-up or questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Labatt.
Thank you.
So, that takes us down to item 6.3 on our agenda, MCPS fund balance and use to fund next year's budget. So, I think, Dan, Rob?
I'll take this one. This is a quick one. I'll take this one. And I believe this is our last item. So, slides, please. Thank you. Next slide. So, basically, what this tells us is each year, the county executive asks us to save, in effect, $25 million that we can push forward to the next fiscal year to help offset some of our costs for the next fiscal year. Traditionally, we've accomplished this through laps and turnover. We have a pretty good idea each year what the apps, the average lapse in turnover is going to be. And since we manage salaries and benefits for employees centrally within the Office of Finance, as laps and turnover occurs, and it's not going to be refilled, we hold those dollars back so that we can make sure that we accomplish that $25 million as part of our fund balance, which will be pushed forward and appropriated the next fiscal year. So, next slide, please. Which will be pushed forward and appropriated the next fiscal year, so next slide please. Interesting, we're not the only local LEA in the state that actually does this. From what Rob has told me in the past, the vast majority of LEAs are requested and required to do the same. Maneuver each fiscal year. Over the past several years, the amount has changed slightly. Oh, probably the last three or four, last I look, it's been twenty five million dollars. I know it was less at one point and I know, I believe it was more one year also. But this is twenty five million dollars that were required as the first twenty five million dollars next year. To use for funding our operations, so next slide please. So when we look at this. Graphic here, as you'll see, since twenty eighteen, we've had twenty five million dollars that we have pushed forward. And to the right of that is the remaining fund balance outside of that twenty five million dollars. So at the end of twenty twenty, we still had an additional three million dollars. On top of that twenty five that was not obligated or expended. That money is set aside for post closing adjustments. If we find an accounting entry that we need to correct. If we get invoices above a contracted amount that we're required to pay. These dollars remain in our fund balance and if we need these dollars. We can reach out to the county council and get them appropriated in the subsequent fiscal year. Additionally, we hold back money which is not necessarily, it's not identified on this chart. For our inventory. So last year was the first year we held that, we held back. What we believed was the value of our in, of our inventory in our warehouse. It was about five and a half million dollars, so that money is set aside in fund balance because that's still a liability to the school system. As we move forward this year, next year. We only have to change that amount set aside for inventory. By what is called the change in inventory that year. So if our inventory goes from five and a half million to seven. We'll have to identify an extra million and a half and keep it in our fund balance to offset the increasing liability. And if our inventory reduces to three million, that allows us. The ability to not have to contribute any additional money to our inventory. So there's a way of managing the inventory by one adjustment at the end of each fiscal year. So that we take a snapshot of what our inventory is. And make sure we're holding back sufficient resources to cover the amount of that inventory. So the three million right now, we have not touched in fiscal year twenty one, so it'll remain part of fund balance. Unless something comes in between now and the end of this fiscal year. So as you'll see, we've gone as high as in twenty fourteen of thirty eight million dollars. We used to fund the following year to a low of twenty two point seven million dollars. Once again, we're shooting for the twenty five million dollars, that's the deal, well, deal, that's what our budget requires for fiscal year twenty one. And I fully anticipate we will get there without any, any problems, so any questions, be glad to answer them.
Dr. Daca, Ms. O'Neill, any questions?
I'd also like to add, Rob has pointed out this to me, some other school systems. Even outside the state of Maryland do this and some of them hold back. A whole lot more money than MCPDS does as part of the balance. We, we're pretty, we're pretty. We're not exposed, but we're not overholding. It seems like a reasonable point for us at the twenty five million dollars. I know that he has mentioned to me that other schools may do two or three times the twenty five million dollars held back. So right now we are sticking with the twenty five that has worked well with. The county executive and the county council, so there's no plan to change that right now. But as I like to say, it only has real, real financial impact the first year where you have to save the initial amount. And the last year when you have to spend the additional amount. Every year in between, if you're at twenty five million dollars. You got receipt and disbursement of the same amount, so basically it's an offsetting adjustment. In the middle years of this plan, so if we ever stop doing this. That'll free up twenty five million dollars that last fiscal year that the plan's in place that we'll have for other obligations.
Any, any questions, Dr.? Not you, I mean.
Where it also has played out negatively in the past was where we were asked to contribute more to the fund balance. And that threw us into a position where we had to make some freezes, freezes in purchasing. You know, freezes in hiring. But you know, right now, I mean, once you have that twenty five million. As you have to contribute, I mean, it is an assumption the county makes every year. But also I wanted to comment about the three million. You know, because of the ebb and flow of how purchase orders are processed. I mean, it's just like your own personal checkbook. You know, not going to zero. Every month is not a good financial practice. I know that in this COVID period where families are struggling, that may be where many people have been. But it's, you know, you always need to have that, have some kind of cushion there. But if suddenly the county asks us to contribute more. It would be, it would have a significant impact on us.
Okay, anything else, Dr. Daca, Ms. O'Neill? Okay, thanks, Dan.
Sure, I think that's all we've got today, I'm not sure, but.
Well, last item on the agenda is just going through. Some of the new priority that the fiscal management committee is going to take this year. And taking a look as chair at an issue that I would like us to focus on is MCPS's. Sustainability Plan and what we're doing to sort of. Become more efficient in our operations. Both environmentally and and fiscally. And so in future meetings, we'll be having, we'll be working alongside. The Department of Facilities Management, Seth Adams. And Lynn Zarate, who leads the sustainability and compliance work there. To look at various aspects of the MCPS Sustainability Plan. And their goals to expand that work in a variety of ways.
So Ms. Harris, I just want to point out, you know, the. The board's disciplined work process calls for us to, every committee to submit a work plan. And, you know, specifically staying within the charge of the committee. So the issue about where we can save money or the monetary piece falls under this committee. We have in the past, when Sean Gallagher was in, you know, in his position under Facilities Management. We had a number of presentations and I think even the the discussion about the IAF and the touching on CERT. Certainly, the CERT funds that are going back to schools is of interest to this committee. Because that also falls under that, that's a piece of environmental sustainability. So if, if, you know, I think that it is also an issue of broad interest to the Board of Education. So this committee should really, under our charge, be focused on the monetary piece. But there are policy implications, strategic planning implications. So it is a broader discussion for the full board. I would suggest that maybe that you, you and our committee write a memo to the full board asking. That at some point there be a broad discussion with the full board and that this committee look at the monetary pieces.
Yeah. One of the things that I discussed with Mr. Adams and Ms. Zarate was looking at. Sustainability through the lens of our procurement practices. It was something they had a lot of interest in doing. So I will take your suggestion and sitting with Mr. Adams. And reflecting on the conversations that we've had, put together that memo. Because we definitely have identified ways that perhaps fiscal management committee and the policy management committee want, want to look at some of these issues together.
Yeah, and the procurement and also Jeannie Dawson. Because she is responsible for that area, so it's not just Mr. Adams.
Okay, that is all that we have on the agenda, is there anything else before we conclude? I guess I should note that right now, the tentative date of our next fiscal management committee meeting is March fifteenth. That is fluid because that is also could coincide with the opening of reopening. So we will, but we do have to meet before the end of March because we do have some responsibilities. And reporting that we have to send forward to the county executive by the end of March. So if we move away from March fifteenth, we still will be convening at some point in March. Is there anything else before we adjourn? So again, just thank you again to everybody here for all of the work and all of the information. And I look forward to continuing to work together this year. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you very much, bye bye.